Yeah, I didn't see, I didn't get this. I can get that too.
The regular meeting for Thursday, December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two will now come to order. I ask that you silence your cell phones, and if there's any comments you want to make on any item, bring the blue slips up to Jess. We'll now have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Underpoint.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather here this evening, we pause to give you thanks and praise for the many blessings that you've given us. We ask your blessing upon everyone here this evening. We pray that our actions be pleasing in your sight and that your Holy Spirit guide us in the decisions that we make. May you keep us strong in our faith, persevering in our prayers, diligent in our work, and generous to those who are in need. And we ask all of these favors in your Son's name, Jesus Christ our Lord and Redeemer. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Underpoint.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir. Mr. Abschar, Mr. Andrew Barne, Mr. Barris, Vice President Varty, Mr. Brain, Mr. Burley, Mr. Guillory, Mr. Hayes, Mr. Landry, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Markentell, Mr. Richard, Mr. Smith, Mr. Tremonti, and President Stelly.
Here.
You do have a question.
Thank you, ma'am. And we now have a personal privilege by Mr. Brain.
Thank you, Mr. President. Where'd Leo go?
He's right behind me.
Okay. I have asked Leo and J.D. to come and sing a couple of Christmas songs for us. Leo is new to town. He's been here, I guess, since August, and he is our...
October.
October.
Yes.
And he is our music minister at Trinity Baptist Church, minister of music at Trinity Baptist Church. And Leo, I believe, or you're in the praise and worship in the cavern, right?
Yes.
North Binyuu.
Yes.
I get them all messed up.
J.D. Broussard.
J.D. Broussard. Take it away.
Amen.
Sing some Christmas songs.
Thank you, Mr. Brain, for inviting me. Said, "Good evening to everybody."
Good evening.
It's good to be in Louisiana, and I smell food, so I'm trying to focus on the singing here. Hallelujah. And I'm gonna sing two songs for you this evening, and the first is "Mary, Did You Know?", and the second is "Joy to the World!", which I may ask you to sing along with me on one of the verses of "Joy to the World!", just to see if you know it. But I begin with a little bit of the story. Luke two, verse fifteen. Says, "When the angels had departed from them into heaven, the shepherds began saying to one another, 'Let us go straight to Bethlehem then and see this thing that has happened, which the Lord has made known to us.' And they came in a hurry and found their way to Mary and Joseph and the baby as he lay in the manger. When they had seen him, they made known the statement which had been told them about this child; and all who heard it were amazed about the things which were told to them. But Mary, she pondered all of these things in her heart." Mary, did you know that your baby boy would one day walk on water? Mary, did you know that your baby boy would save our sons and daughters? Did you know that your baby boy has come to make you new? This child that you delivered will soon deliver you? Mary, did you know that your baby boy will give sight to a blind man? Mary, did you know that your baby boy will calm the storm with his hands? Did you know that your baby boy will... When you kiss your little baby, you've kissed the face of God. Mary, did you know? Mary, did you know? That the blind will see, the dead will hear, the dead will live again, the lame will leap, the tongue will speak, the praise is over. Mary, did you know that your baby boy is Lord of all creation? Did you know that your baby boy would rule the nations? Did you know that your baby boy is heaven's perfect lamb? And this sleeping child you're holding, he's the great I am. He is the great I am. The great I am. I was told I had twelve minutes. There goes seven of them, Mr. Brain. Just so you know, I timed this thing. Amen. Luke two, verse seven. "And she gave birth to her firstborn son; and she wrapped him in cloths and laid him in a manger, because there was no room for them in the inn. In the same region there were some shepherds staying out in the fields and keeping watch over their flock at night; and the angel of the Lord suddenly stood near to them, and the glory of the Lord shone around them, and they were terribly frightened. And so the angel said to them, 'Do not be afraid; for behold, I bring you good news of great joy, which will be for all the people; for today in the city of David there has been born for you a Savior, who is Christ the Lord, and this will be a sign for you.'" You will find a baby wrapped in cloths, lying in a manger, and suddenly there appeared with the angel a multitude of the heavenly hosts praising God and saying, "Glory to God in the highest, and on earth peace among people with whom he is pleased." Joy to the world. Joy to the world, the Lord has come. Let earth receive her King. Let every heart prepare him room, and heaven and nature sing, and heaven and nature sing, and heaven, and heaven, and nature sing. Joy to the world, the Savior reigns. Let men their sons employ, while the fields and floods, rocks, hills, and plains repeat the sound of joy, repeat the sound of joy, repeat, repeat the sound of joy. No more let sin and sorrow grow, nor thorns impede the ground. He comes to make his blessings flow, far as the curse is found, far as the curse is found, far as, far as the curse is found. Have your time to sing with me. He rules the world, he rules the world with truth and faith, and makes the nations true, the glory of his righteousness, and wonders of love, and wonders of his love, and wonders, wonders of his love, and wonders of love, and wonders, wonders of his love. Thank you, guys. Eleven minutes and thirty seconds.
Thank you, guys. That was beautiful. Thank you very much.
Took five, five minutes of your time.
Could've went five more until the public hearing.
Three.
We will go to two A. Approved applications for liquor and beer permits. Staff recommends two new and six renewal applications be approved. I have a motion by Mr. Abschar and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Two A passes. Three A.
Move on, three A.
Adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the professional engineering contract to include additional services for the Big Lake Waterline Expansion Project. I have a motion by Mr. Markentell and a second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Three A passes. Three B. Adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the professional engineering contract for continuation of engineering services related to the planning and strategic analysis of watersheds in Calqueshoe Parish. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Underpoint. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Three B passed. Three C.
Move on, three C.
Adopt a resolution approving a professional engineering contract for professional surveying services related to the water system improvements and expansions in Ward three and eight. I have a motion by Mr. Hayes and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Three C passes. Three D. Adopt a resolution approving a professional engineering contract for professional engineering design and construction, monitoring services for water system improvements, and in, excuse me, expansions in Ward three and eight. I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Tremonti. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Three D passes. Three E. Adopt a resolution approving an act of sale agreement for the purchase of property for the Goche Road, Lake Charles Regional Airport Sewer Transport System, project phase two.
Move on, three.
I have a motion by Mr. Hayes and a second by Mr. Abschar. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Three E passes. Three F. Adopt a resolution approving the submit of grant application for the two thousand and twenty-two flood mitigation assistance, FMA grant program for acquisition and/or elevation of flood-prone residential structures in Calqueshoe Parish. I have a motion by Mr. Tremonti and a second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Three F passes. Four A. Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I have a motion by Mr. Abschar and a second by Mr. Underpoint. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Four A carries. Four B. Adopt an ordinance approving the relocation of precinct numbers eight sixty-one E and eight sixty-one W to Ward eight, Fire Protection District Number Two Fire Station, thirty-three ninety-five Manchester Road, Iowa, from the former location at Ward two, Fire Protection District Number One Fire Station, at fifty-six seventy-seven Manchester Road, Iowa. I have a motion by Mr. Guillory and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Four B passes. We will now go to our five forty-five. And we're going to hold a public hearing at five forty-five, ordering said owners to show cause as to why the structures on said properties should not be condemned. One A. Twenty-nine fifty-one Flora Road, South Lake Charles. Staff recommends that the structure be removed from the condemnation list to allow the new owner to repair the structure in accordance with the submitted repair list. I have a motion, Mr. Landry, and a second by Mr. Abschar. Do we have a speaker on the item?
I was just here to see if we're being able to go forward on it.
You're good to go.
Sweet. Thank you so much.
Thank you. One B. Twenty-seven fifty-one Southern Drive, Moss Bluff, Ward one, one house. Is there anyone in the audience? State your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Alexa Guzman. I reside in twenty-one five-five-zero Provincial Boulevard in Katy, Texas.
What is your request?
Yes. I needed to give advice that we are not the only ones in a, I would say, within this contract, there was a grant that was given. And so, we are still talking to the police jury in regards to how does a demolition refer to in the contract that we should proceed. The contract says that we are to remodel the home or refurbish the home to sell it to a moderate to low-income housing family. However, we've had substantial damages because of floodings that have occurred throughout the years, and we weren't able to do so. We've exhausted a lot of resources in the community from a lot of churches and other nonprofits that have helped us. However, with the last hurricane, we got hit by lightning, and now the damage is so much so that no one has been able to come forward to give us assistance, including the churches. Even at the time of the hurricane, we asked several companies to TARP. However, they, it was very hard to do a three-story, as they stated, because of the damages in the community that they needed to help or assist in. So currently, like I stated, that there is a vested interest in the police jury under this grant as well, that is part of the Louisiana Land Trust and the Road Home Program. And at this point, I don't know if I can say that we are moving forward to proceed with demolition, because that wasn't part of the grant.
Mr. Crane.
Yes, sir. I'm not sure how to answer that question at this time. I would say that we would probably need to look at that, the terms of that grant. Probably have to get with our legal counsel to see how that affects this, this structure and the condemnation of it and the removal. But unless, Sam, you have any comments regarding it.
So, either way, Mr. Richard.
Go ahead, Mr. Richard.
Well, my question was, that house is condemned. There's some structural damage to it. It needs to be tore down.
It's in a state at this time that it is condemnable. So, based on our, based on the code requirements, it's a condemnable structure, and that's what we're requesting tonight. But I'm not, I'm just not familiar with those, the terms of the, of the grant, what she's referring to.
Isn't, that, that house has flooded several times. Didn't FEMA take over that house at one time and donate it?
I'm not sure.
Or something? How was it acquired?
I can answer that. So, the Louisiana Land Trust had it, and from Baton Rouge, it was transferred to every jurisdiction. And because it was part of Calqueshoe Parish, it came into a grant where it could be disposed to other nonprofits. I was one of them that asked for the grant, and that was then transferred to our nonprofit.
Now, if this house could be repaired or anything, is there some codes that it has to be lifted?
Oh, well, again, if, if it's in a floodplain, then if it's, if it's been deemed substantially damaged and it's more than fifty percent of that, then it may require, yeah, FEMA may require that it be lifted to the required elevation, so.
Oh, Jennifer, oh, Jennifer Kobian is our grants person, so she probably is familiar. Thank you, Jennifer.
Jennifer Kobian, grants director. This, this property, as she mentioned, was, did come, not through the parish, it came through the state, through the Road Home Program. So, the parish did not receive a grant. We, we accepted the state to allow a donation of the property to nonprofits for the purpose of rehabbing the property for certain uses. The property was never rehabbed for those uses. It was in pretty bad shape many years ago. I don't know if it ever got to the point where it was rehabbed over all those years. I think this was, I don't remember the year that, that the transfer took place, but I know we looked at it. We had a lot of neighbors calling years ago. When we were in there for flood mitigation, we, we went to some of the neighbors, because this, this area floods really bad. We've mitigated several right adjacent to this property. They stopped us and said, "Please do something about this structure." So, we looked into it further and found out, you know, that, what the situation was with the LLT grant and the Road Home Grant, and we were kind of in a, in a sticking place. We reached out to the state and said, "Hey, if this person's not in compliance, what's the police jury's liability?" And we could never get a response on that. So, we couldn't even find that entity, those, those staff members didn't even exist. So, it really would be a SAM, I think, determination on that. But from us, we didn't see that we had any liability with that property.
If you'll hold up just a second. Mr. Gab.
The issue before you is, is whether this structure is to be condemned, whether it's a public nuisance or a public hazard in your eyes that needs to be torn down. I, I don't really, I might say I don't care, but I really don't think that consideration is impacted by what other obligations the landowner or anybody else has. If you believe this building is a, is a status that it should be condemned, you should condemn it.
I think, Mr. Barris, had comments?
No, my, it was along the lines of, of Mr. Richard's question about if it's gonna have to be, if it's over fifty percent. And then if they have to raise it, of course, I would imagine that that grant is nowhere even near enough to, to that, to do that and rehab.
There is no grant on the table. The, the grant she was referring to was the state granting her the property many years ago after, after Rita and Katrina through the Road Home Program. So, there's no grant on the table to mitigate this property, to elevate it. There's no money sitting there, no.
Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Ms. Guzman, which I think I already know the answer to what my question was gonna be, and I was gonna ask you, is this the same piece of property that you came before several years ago? I'm sure this is the same one. And look.
To you personally, yes.
She's, she's with a great group, and she does good work, and they're trying to do good things. Of course, this property was donated to this nonprofit through that Road Home Program. And, and of course, the problem has been the lack of funds to repair it. And I'm, I'm trying to remember now, I guess it was the flood zone issue.
So, it wasn't a flood zone. I, I guess I would, I'm not sure what type of flood zone it was, because...
But it's, the, the structure's flooded several times.
Yes, and, and after we've repaired it several times, and we have pictures of repairing it. We have churches that have supported us.
So, how many times has it flooded?
After we repaired it, I think every time we repaired it, there was floods. And, and we couldn't, we couldn't salvage it, because we were the lowest ones in that area, and the ditches were consistently flooding.
Please tell me you have flood insurance.
I did at some point, but after a while, we couldn't really sustain all the damages. They would probably even take us off of it as many times as it was flooding.
I think probably, and look, this isn't in my district, but I, I think this will be up to Mr. Richard. And, and look, I'm grasping at straws here for you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
If by some miracle, you actually have three flood claims, then it would be considered a repetitive loss, and maybe you could, look, Brian, look at that, it's possible. I know the structure's damaged, and it's not worth maybe what it, what it was at one time, but she possibly could get into that program and be bought out under that repetitive loss, getting some funds to go build y'all's building that you, that you're in need of somewhere else. That, that's, you know, that's the only thing. You know, I would love to help you, but this is, this is going on like a long time.
Thank you.
I, I mean, it was after Rita, wasn't it?
Yes, it was after Rita. It was part of the Road Home Program, yes.
Yeah. And look, that's just a thought. I don't know that that's possible or not. It would have to have flooded three times and been reported to FEMA at least three times.
Well, we, we don't qualify under FEMA, because we're, as a business, and I've already contacted them. That's the bigger problem, that we don't qualify for, for police jury grants, for flooding. We don't qualify for FEMA, because we're considered a business.
I don't know. No, that won't work, because it's not an individual. Would you come back up, please?
Mr. Crane might be able to answer. Did you have a comment?
No, sir. I, I just looked it up on our GIS map, you know, to see if it was in a flood, flood zone, and it is. It's in a flood hazard area.
So, there's been at least one flood claim? I don't know how many, but is that program not available to a nonprofit? I didn't think it would matter who owned it.
No, I don't, I don't think that that was the, the issue. I think the issue was, was along the lines of them not being in compliance with a previous program, a previous federal-state program. And, and when you're not in compliance, and, and we dealt with this on, on some other homes, where they received some Road Home money, weren't in compliance, we couldn't move forward. It was considered a duplication of benefits. They would essentially have to pay all that money back to get a clearance or something from the state to say that they are in compliance, or they paid their money back, and then we could put them on another program. But we, as long as they're not in compliance, and right now, they're not in compliance with, with their, with that Road Home Program, then we can't put them on another one.
But they still, who owns the property?
They do.
Right. It's been given to them, so as the owner of the property, can, can they not make a repetitive loss claim?
They did make repetitive loss claims. It's not the repetitive loss issue, it's, it's just a federal program, federal grant rule that you, if you're not in compliance...
To me, that's two separate issues. That's just two separate issues.
Right, so they, they made the repetitive loss, so they can check that box, and then we go to the next step, which is, do they have any, any outstanding programs that they're not in compliance with? They can't check that box. They, they get stuck right there.
Since they can't check that box, they can't move forward with the repetitive loss program?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, never mind.
Mr. Barris.
I was trying. I'm, I'm good, thank you.
I'm confused about how I did not, we're not in compliance. I think that stating we're not in compliance is, is saying that we did not try to fulfill the requirements, and I just stated, we, we tried to, several... the requirements, and I just stated, we, we tried to several times, but it was consistently flooding.
Yeah, second, Mr. Beam.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I want to echo Mr. Gab's comments. It's important that extraneous items don't get in the middle of this. I gotta be careful, but let's just say hypothetically, Mr. Landry, they would be eligible for that other program. That may be a year, year and a half, these things take a long time, and this, the reason this is before you, as y'all know, it's a public health and safety issue. And every day that goes by, you gotta weigh that against things that are really outside the scope of what is before you. But I just wanted to clarify that. I think Ms. Kobian explained it well, but even if it were eligible, this is not gonna happen anytime soon.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I don't, do we have a motion before us or not? Make the motion, we can...
I'll second.
We, we have a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, a motion by Mr. Richard and a second by Mr. Markentel to condemn. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 1B is condemned.
And to have it removed in...
And have it removed in 30 days.
Yes, sir, thank you.
1C, 284 Shifon Road, East Lake Charles, Ward 8, 1 house. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on 1C? State your name and address for the record, please.
Carolyn Sivant, 5729 Western Drive.
What is your request?
Not really a request. I am in the process of getting bids to have the horse, house torn down.
To have it torn down? Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Gilery, I need a second. Second by Mr. Barti. How much time do you need? How much time does she have? She wants, she's taking, getting bids to tear it down, how much time does she have?
She's got 30 days.
Well, we would recommend that it be torn down in 30 days. And I can, there's some extensions that are built into the ordinance that I can work with her to give her if she, you know, has a, has a person that's gonna tear it down. And so I would recommend 30 days, and then let us work with them.
Okay, so the motion is to condemn in 30 days? Is there any other, other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 1C. You have 30 days, but what you need to do is get with Mr. Crane. There's a possibility for extension time, so you can get that with him. Judge, go ahead.
We're condemning it today.
Yes, we are.
We're tearing it down by 30 days.
That's correct.
I want to make sure we say it.
That is correct.
Okay.
1D, 3502 Burton Lane, Lake Charles, Ward 3, 1 house. Anyone in the audience for 1D?
Move on 1D.
I have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Onderpont. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 1D is condemned and to be removed in 30 days. 1E, 709 Bennett Road, South Lake Charles, Ward 3, 1 house.
Move on 1E.
Is there anyone in the audience to speak on 1E? Hearing none, I have a motion by Mr. Hayes and a second by Mr. Markentel. 1E is condemned and to be removed in 30 days. 1F?
Move on 1F.
7644 Spec Drive, South Lake Charles, Ward 3, 1 manufactured home. Anyone in the audience to speak on 1F? I have a motion by Mr. Hayes and a second by Mr. Burley. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 1F is condemned and is to be removed in 30 days. 1G, 5838 West Pinewood Drive, Lake Charles, South Lake Charles, Ward 3, 1 house. Any, any one in the audience on 1G?
Move to condemn.
I have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Markentel. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 1G is condemned and to be removed in 30 days. 1H, 2211 Manhide Road, La Blue Settlement, Ward 8, 1 house. Anyone in the audience on 1H?
Move to condemn.
I have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Abshar on 1H. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, it is to be condemned and removed in 30 days. 1I?
Move.
2980 Cardinal Lane, Gillis, 1 Ward 1, 1 manufactured home. Anyone in the audience on 1I? Seeing none, I have a motion by Mr. Markentel and a second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 1I is to be condemned and removed in 30 days. 1J, 3767 Outback Lane, La Blue Settlement, Ward 8, 1 manufactured home. Is there anyone in the audience on 1J? Seeing none, I have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 1J is to be condemned and removed in 30 days. 1K?
Move on.
1225 Cross Street, Dequincy, Ward 6, 1 house. Anyone in the audience on 1K? Seeing none, I have a motion by Mr. Markentel and a second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 1K is condemned and to be removed in 30 days. 1L, 4760 Carless Drive, Carless, Ward 4, 1 house.
Move.
Any discussion? I mean, I'm sorry, anyone in the audience for 1L? Seeing none, I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Onderpont. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 1L is to be condemned and removed in 30 days. 1M, 2929 Spell Road, Vinton, Ward 7, 1 house and 1 accessory building. Is there anyone in the audience on 1M? Seeing none, I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Ms. Onderpont. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 1M is condemned and to be removed in 30 days. 1N, 3149 Davis Road, Westlake, Ward 4, 1 manufactured home. Anyone in the audience on 1N? Seeing none, I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Braim. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 1N is to be condemned and removed in 30 days. 1O?
Move on 1O.
1531 Miller Avenue, Westlake, Ward 4, 1 commercial metal building. Anyone in the audience on 1O? Seeing none, I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Braim. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 1O is to be condemned and removed in 30 days. 1P, 1405 Valera Lane, Self, Ward 4, 1 accessory building. Anyone in the audience on 1P? Seeing none, I have a motion by Mr. Tremonti and a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 1P is to be condemned and removed in 30 days. 1Q, 3905 Mars Street, Self, Ward 4, 1 house. Anyone in the audience on 1Q? Seeing none, I have a motion by Mr. Tremonti and a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 1Q is condemned and to be removed in 30 days. And we will go back to 4C. Adopt a resolution approving a cooperative endeavor agreement and quit claim, quit claim deed wherein the police jury approves the transfer, quit claim, and delivery of its interest in the property located at 1402 Center Street in Vinton, Louisiana, to the district. I have a motion by Mr. Markentel and a second by Mr. Barti. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 4C passes.
Move on 5A.
5A, adopt a resolution approving the proposed parish, parish budget for fiscal year 2023 in accordance with the public hearing held on Thursday, December 1, 2022, and the recommendation of the Budget Committee. I have a motion by Mr. Onderpont and a second by Mr. Braim. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 5A passes. 5B, adopt a resolution authorizing changes within various budget classifications approved therein without further approval. I have a motion by Mr. Braim and a second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 5B passes. 5C, adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year 2022 budget for those funds which deviate from estimated budgeted revenues, expenditures, and/or fund balances. I have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Braim. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 5C passes. 6A?
Move to adopt.
Adopt a resolution approving a low-income home energy assistance program, LEHEEP Agreement, for the grant period from October 1, 2022 to September 30, 2024. I have a motion by Mr. Gilery and a second by Mr. Richard. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 6A passes. 6B?
Move on 6B.
Adopt a resolution approving a sub-grantee agreement?
Second.
For housing counseling services provided between October 1, 2022 through September 30, 2023. I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 6B passes. 6C?
So move.
Adopt a resolution approving cooperative endeavor agreements for participation and funding assistance in the support of the 2023 Summer Food Service Program. I have a motion by Mr. Barti and a second by Mr. Gilery. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 6C passes. 7A?
Move to adopt.
Adopt a resolution approving a contract between the Police Jury and Landscape Management Services Incorporated for lawn and ground beautification and maintenance services. I have a motion by Mr. Braim and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 7A passes.
Move on 8A.
8A, approve all current invoices and advise regarding monthly budget to actual comparisons on the general fund. I have a motion by Mr. Onderpont and a second by Mr. Hayes. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 8A carries.
Move on 8B.
8B, adopt a resolution invoking the authority which provides for a declaration of public emergency for any procurement related to the Magnolia Building Flood Repairs Project. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Braim. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 8B passes. 8C?
I humbly ask that we move on 8C.
Second.
Alrighty then. Adopt a resolution on bids for the Bud Bennett Road Extension Project. Staff recommends the bid of HD Truck and Tractor LLC in the amount of $1,365,583.55 be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Markentel and a second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Yes.
I thank Mr. Bruce and his staff for the work they put into this. When I was elected, this is the number one project I had, and it's come to fruition, so I'm a happy camper.
Any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 8C passes. 8D, adopt a resolution accepting the 14th Judicial District Court Hurricane Repair Project as substantially complete. Mr. Braim?
Ah, yes.
I need a motion?
So move. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Barti and a second by Mr. Barris.
You're fine.
Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 8D passes. 8E, action on bids for 1, 2022, our newer one-ton dual-wheel extended cab pickup truck. Staff recommends the bid of Mike Willis Ford LLC in the amount of $67,600 be accepted. Mr. Barris?
Let the record reflect that I recuse myself from this item.
Myself as well.
And the next. And F? I have an Onderpont.
I have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Onderpont. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 8E passes. 8F?
Move on 8A.
Action on bids for 1, 2022, our newer 3/4-ton extended cab and chassis. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Abshar. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 8F passes. 8G? 8F, did I say the price? Staff recommends the bid of Mike Willis Ford LLC in the amount of $55,521 be accepted. 8G, action on bids for Crush Stone. Staff recommends the bids of Apex Aggregate Supply LLC, DP Aggregates LLC, and Port Aggregates Incorporated be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Richard and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 8G passes. 8H?
Move on 8A.
Action on bids for assorted pipes and fittings. Staff recommends the bid of Coburn Supply Company Incorporated be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Hayes and a second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 8H passes. 8I, action on bids for collection and distribution of pipes and fittings. Staff recommends the bids of Coburn Supply Company Incorporated?
Move on.
Core and Main LP and Lafayette Wind Water Works Company be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 8I passes. 8J, action on bids for sewer pumps and related parts. Staff recommends the bid of BMW Pump and Equipment LLC, Do and Business As Magnolia Pump and Equipment Incorporated be accepted.
Move on.
I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, 8J passes. 9A, adopt a resolution of condolences to be forwarded to the family of the late Johnny Allen Mouton. Mr. Barti?
Yes, I make the motion. Mr. Johnny Mouton was, was an educator for Calcasieu Parish. He worked with the Calcasieu Parish School Board for over, I think, 36 years when he retired. We lost a great servant. He was one of these guys that, I got to know him, you know, a long time ago. He and I served on the same fraternity. But he was one of these guys that, he was all style. He had a lot of style and a lot of grace, a lot of class, and he could get there and make a joke, and you thought he was serious. But he would literally say something that, and it would take me a while to figure it out. I would get home, and then I said, oh, wow, he really got me this time. But he was hilarious, but he was a, a lot of substance. And the area lost a great man, and I just wanted to just put something on our agenda just to, just to recognize him, because I think he was a great servant to Calcasieu Parish and to the city of Lake Charles. He served on several boards with the city, and I think he even did something with the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury, as, you know, when I went to the, his services, there was something in his obituary that made notice of some work he did with the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury. So I just felt it fitting that we would recognize him, and I just thank you guys for doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Barti. 10A, consideration of... Go ahead, Tony.
Okay. I was gonna just say, Anthony on the opposite end of that, me and Mr. Mouton was in the Mardi Gras crew for about 25 years, so we had a lot of good times together, a lot of different costumes and everything else, but he was a great person for the community, and prayers to his family and everything. So thank you all, thank you, Anthony.
Mr. Smith?
Oh, yes, he definitely was a great man, Mr. Mouton. He served as an educator, as well as, what I remember him by, he worked with the, the city with the summer feeding program. So he was very instrumental in getting those meals out and kind of getting everything staff during, during the summertime. So I want to definitely offer my sincere condolences to him, to his family and his wife.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else? Thank you. 10A, consideration of going into executive session to discuss prescription opioids litigation. Consideration of going into executive session to discuss prescription opioids litigation.[1099.13]